Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first in-person meeting of 2022. It is my honor to start the meeting with a proclamation. Councilmember Postherly, please take it over.
Okay, thank you, President McGinnis. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all here in person tonight. And we have a very special presentation for a very special young man. And at this time, before I read the proclamation, I would like to ask Joe Brand to come up and say something about Dunia Subomano Rodriguez, who just took home the state championship for wrestling.
Real quickly, I'll just, I've had the pleasure of knowing Dunia since he came to the country. Most of the people in the room know my relationship with his dad, Miguel. You know, when I think about Dunia, I think about two things. I think about courage, I think about perseverance. And if you want to talk about two attributes that young and old alike are drawn to, or would like to see somebody who has those attributes as much as he does, how they draw people to them and how much people want to be around him. Nobody does it alone. One of the famous, I guess, expressions you hear is, "It takes a village." And in Dunia's case, it certainly has. All right? Like I said, right, nobody does it alone. It starts at home. It starts with, you know, a loving household. And they don't come any more loving than the family that he resides with now. Marissa, Miguel, Elijah, and Stella, a wonderful Long Beach family, committed to the community. You take a young man like Dunia, who's so driven to succeed, and you, you know, expose him to that community and that school district, and he runs with it. You know, I remember supervising soccer games that Miguel was coaching, and Dunia would just come along for the ride. And I had the hardest job at the soccer field that day because trying to keep up with Dunia is impossible. I think what you, what you see here tonight is just the tip of the iceberg for this young man. It's not even something I think. I think everybody in the room probably would all agree, considering what he's been through, where he is. The sky's the limit. And I don't think this is going to be the first time that we're standing in the council chambers here honoring this young man. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Dunia. I'd like to introduce Miguel. And I'll let Tina read the proclamation on behalf of the city, the city of Long Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Hello. Dunia, whereas the city of Long Beach wishes to recognize those individuals who are committed to the betterment of the city and the lives of our residents, and whereas the city of Long Beach does also desire to publicly acknowledge Dunia Subomano Rodriguez in honor of his New York State Tournament victory in the 102-pound Division I championship. And now and therefore, on this day, March 1st, 2022, the City Council and the City Manager of the City of Long Beach, in recognition of his outstanding achievement, proudly present this proclamation to Dunia Subomano Rodriguez. Thank you so much. Do you want to say something? You're an inspiration to all of us.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you, you know, like Mr. Brandt, you know, it takes a village, you know, and I said it before, you know, we live in a wonderful community. And I think that we should just continue to work together for the better of the city because that's just the result of it. You know, Dunia didn't do it alone. You know, he has a great team behind him, and we're very lucky to have him here, you know, inspiring us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for being a wonderful, influencing coach.
Congratulations.
The last, the last thing we want to talk about here, Dunia, as you know, I've told you already, but for everyone else, Dunia is going to be made Police Commissioner for a Day in recognition of his achievements on this coming Friday. We're going to get him out of school a little bit early, his dad's going to bring him over. We're going to bring him into the police department, show him around a little bit, got a couple of gifts for you. And you're inspirational, actually, to each and every one of us as well. And when I really started following the story and talking to your dad, talking to people around town, you have a lot of love in this community, and we would be honored if you would accept that from us as being our Police Commissioner for the day on Friday. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Great stuff.
Okay. What's this one here? Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach, held Tuesday, March 1st, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. We have a roll call. Councilmember Postherly.
Present.
Councilmember Lester.
Present.
Councilmember Bendo.
Present.
Vice President Treston.
Here.
President McGinnis.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager Ron Walsh and Corporation Council Richard Barrios. We now have a salute to the flag.
Mr. Barrios, would you do the honors, please?
Yes. My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Hello again, everyone. Let me know if I'm not speaking into the mic, Nora. So I just want to start off by saying City Manager Gaden is en route. She will be here momentarily, so we're going to push the City Manager report to, towards the end of the meeting. I just want to start out with two housekeeping items. The first one is that we are ever trying, ever trying to improve how we do business with the city. So we were looking at the code regarding good and welfare and what it says, how we're supposed to follow the process. So you'll notice that the sheets have changed slightly. And again, this is something that we're still modifying, so if you have any comments or questions, please feel free to ask any one of the council members. I also want to mention in housekeeping that Ms. Redznik has issued the January 2022 year-to-date budget report. It is on the transparency portal. She's been working on those reports. It's a lot of work, and I want to thank her for that. She made some highlights to that report. One highlight is that in the general fund, there was a negative, negative variance of over $1 million in the beginning of fiscal year 2022 as far as beach revenue. This is something that we're going to have to make up somehow. Discussions with staff and the council on ways to address the shortfall by the end of the fiscal year are ongoing. The second issue or variance in the general fund is the fire, paid fire department overtime salaries. Right now, through January 2022, overtime salaries were at 150% of the total budget for the fiscal year. This makes the entire fire department budget at 99% right now through January for the entire fiscal year. The primary drivers of the spike in overtime are a mix of staff shortages due to COVID, less full-time staff versus budget, full-time staff on temporary disability due to work injuries, and a dramatic increase in paramedic attrition, primarily driven by uncompetitive salary, market salaries. Overtime spending, according to the controller, can be managed via labor contracts. There are discussions between the Paid Fire Department Union leadership and the city's Corporation Council's office, which are ongoing. With that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. Item 1 is approval of minutes from prior meeting of February 15th, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Before we vote, I just have one quick correction.
Sure.
In the very, very last sentence of the minutes, it says about closing the meeting. It says it was seconded by Mr. Lester and was duly closed, all five council members present voting in the affirmative. There was only four council members present at the meeting.
Five to four.
Your mic's on.
Oh, mic's on.
Okay.
We're changing. In the last sentence of the meeting minutes, it said all five council members voted to close the meeting. There were only four council members present at the meeting. So we're changing five to four.
In spirit, though.
In spirit. Okay. Vote on the minutes as amended? Councilmember Postherly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Treston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Okay. Item 2 is transmission of a certificate to the City Council by the City Clerk. All of you should have received the original copy of the certificate in your packets this week, and the copy has been left on the desk on top, and it's also in the agenda under item 2.
Okay. Mr. Barrios, you want to tell us a little bit about the process, please?
Sure. So as everyone remembers, the City Council opted out of the MRTA last year. We had a certain window of time in which residents who wanted to force a referendum would file petitions with the office. Petitions were submitted. The City Clerk reviewed them as per the law and basically concluded, as per the certification, that the signatures did not meet the constitutional requirements for a referendum, so there won't be a referendum on this issue. As far as the future is concerned, this administration or any future administration can opt in to, to the MRTA sometime in the future. We can hold future public hearings. As we get more data, we can consider that, and the council can make an informed decision if it chooses to do so.
Thank you, Rich. So basically, the council has asked to be, still be apprised of any rulings, et cetera, by the state, State's Office of Cannabis Management. So this is an ongoing, fluid issue of which the council still not has made any sort of final decisions. We're just following the process.
Right.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Bendo?
I just have one. And on the summary you provided us on Section 9, subsection EF, you talk about the petition volume numbers. Can you just tell us what the volume numbers are?
So the question was what the volume numbers were?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what did define, just define what the volume number means?
It's basically on the cover sheets. So when petitions are traditionally submitted, they're submitted in packets. And so you have cover sheets on every individual bunch of petitions. If you have more than one pack, it's supposed to constitute one whole petition. So multiple volumes equal one petition.
Okay. So it's like in a volume of an encyclopedia or something?
Right.
Okay.
I do have one question.
Mr. Lester?
I'm not sure.
Speak up, please. Your mic's on.
Is it working?
Quick up. Up top here.
Okay, there. Mr. Barrios, was there any indication on the number of signatures that were required other than the 10% of the vote in the gubernatorial election?
I'm sorry.
Was there any indication? In other words, if somebody went out to get a petition, did they know how many valid signatures they needed?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know if they knew. I know the numbers, it's available. It's an available number from the Board, the County Board of Elections.
Do you know how easy that was? I know that.
So Mr. Commissioner Walsh pointed out to me that on item number seven of the certification, it states that per Nassau County Board of Elections, the total number of votes cast by the city for governor in the last gubernatorial election was 12,613.
Yes, but that's on the certification. That's not, you know, I'm asking at the time of the petition, was there? I know that we've gone through this before in petition and, and, you know, you need the same thing when you're running for office, and it's often difficult to find that number.
Right.
I just was wondering if that number was easily available, other than going through the machinations of trying to get the number from the Board of Elections?
I'm not sure what you mean by machinations, but the Board, the Board of Elections said the total number of votes was 12,000.
Karen, we know what they said. We know the number.
I'm not here to editorialize. The gubernatorial election said it was 12,613 votes. Therefore, it's 10%, which is roughly 1,200.
We know that. I'm asking, was that number readily available to the people? And Mr. Barrios, you say that you would have had to go into the Board of Election to get that number?
That's where we got it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to purchase bunker gear for the Long Beach Fire Department under New York State contract.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Again, I'm new at this, so I'd like to open that up to the public. Is that correct?
You can.
Okay. Yes, sir? Yes, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nathaniel Epstein. I live at 200 Black Heath Road in Lido Beach. I'm one of the activists who, who collected.
Can't, it's hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said I'm one of the activists who collected signatures. We were aware that the number was somewhere near 1,260, and that we had fallen short of our goal. However, that wasn't going to deter us from turning in the petition. We still wanted to make it clear that there's a good portion of people in town who, who are for forcing a referendum on this issue. We also had numerous challenges. For one, I don't know about the rest of my fellow activists, but I did not know that those, those people had to be registered in Long Beach at the time of the gubernatorial race. That was four years ago, and many people have moved to Long Beach since then who are interested in signing the petition. Many other people wanted to sign who have, who have just moved here and weren't registered. So.
No, it was registered at the last election.
I'm sorry?
Registered at the last election.
Oh, the last election?
Yes.
Okay. Well, this I just learned today personally. Okay. So I just wanted to speak on this for a moment, if I may. First of all, I am curious why the, why only 55% of the signatures were allowed? If you have any notes on that?
For various reasons. There are a bunch of signatures that were not on the registered voter rolls. There were some that were illegible.
Okay.
That couldn't, couldn't read at all. Some that they didn't specify, you know, didn't fully specify a name or an address. Those, those are the main reasons why they would have been disallowed. Or some, and some that were not in Long Beach at all, as you alluded to before.
Okay. Well, I feel a need to add that, you know, we were outside in a blizzard, talking to people we'd never met, with no voter information, no, no systems to tell us who voted and who to, whose address to go to, during a blizzard, during a pandemic, trying to get people's attention who were walking by. So all these factors were at play here, and we had a good amount of people who weren't registered but interested in this. Sorry. My point's not to make excuses for why we fell short, it's to say that if you believe only 300 or so residents want retail cannabis, you're mistaken. I myself met dozens of residents not yet registered who wanted to sign. Many of the people with whom I spoke had no idea that the city opted out of retail cannabis, and many others were supportive but had other reasons not to want to disclose their names publicly, as in they would have voted yes in an election, but they didn't want their name attached to the stigma. Let's talk about more numbers. I know that 90% of Americans nationally believe that cannabis should be legal, and 60 to 68%, depending on which poll you look at, believe that it should be, that it should be legal recreationally. I'm sorry, the first time I meant to say medically, the second time recreationally. And that includes 55% of Republicans even, so. The Marijuana and Regulation Tax, Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act passed in the State Assembly by 100 to 49, and in the Senate by 40 to 23. So if that isn't democratic enough, I don't really know what that says about our system and about what this council thinks of our system. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Ms. Vining?
Hello.
Hi.
Judy Vining for Tennessee Broadway, Long Beach. I just want to say that clearly this council had their fingers on the pulse of the community. If, even if you took the top number, 700, which some were disqualified, out of a city of 35,000, that's not a cry for having cannabis dispensaries or consumption sites within the city. It is legal. This is not about legalization at all. It's about what we want our city to look and feel like. The state of California, over 80% of the municipalities opted out of local sales and consumption sites. So I think you guys are to be congratulated on having the foresight to know what this community really wants and what this community really is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulvaney?
I'm certainly glad to be here and out there.
Good evening. Please state your name and address.
James Mulvaney, Dalton Street, Long Beach. I have bad arthritis, and I've been prescribed medical marijuana. I have to drive to Carl Place every other week, and I was hoping that as things expanded, I wouldn't have to drive to Carl Place. I take any number of other things because I'm an old guy, and I just go to Precision. I go to my local pharmacy. I can't do that, and it seems as if because some people may have some problems of their own, think we should all not be allowed to use marijuana. It's legal. What I take is legal. I have a card in my pocket from the state. I, the question of whether it's a gateway drug, tobacco was the first gateway drug. Beer is the second gateway drug. Marijuana isn't, isn't a problem. I wonder if before you reached this conclusion, if anybody had gone to Carl Place, if anybody had gone to Lake Success and looked at the places that are now selling marijuana. We hear a lot of panic, a lot of, oh, there's going to be all kinds of bad people. You want bad people? Right here next to Walbams. Lot of drug dealing going on. Carl Place, not so much. So I don't understand why the drives of the world, all of a sudden, are wagging the dog. I hope that in the future, as, as things continue, you will start to think about people who have a legitimate legal right to get marijuana, and you're making us drive out of town. Is that the Long Beach we want? Drive people out of town? I hope not. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nathan? Okay, Mr. Commissioner?
Just want to say one thing. While I appreciate your comments about everything that you just mentioned, I don't think any geographic location in this city can be singled out as bad people, so I do not accept the fact that you said next to Walbams.
I was not talking about any specific people. I was one of the opponents when the original plan for Walbams to be built, that was going to come to the street.
I just merely wanted to clarify.
And it was moved back.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mulvaney.
It wasn't grandstanding. I just didn't want it to be misinterpreted.
Okay, Mr. Nathan?
On my part.
Understood.
Good evening.
Good evening. Joseph Naham, 700 Shore Road, Long Beach. The city opted out of a time when the holiday season, the shortest periods of daylight, and blizzards were confronting petitioners. As, as we said before, it was nearly mission impossible, and it was almost as if it was by design to try and get us to collect that amount of signatures in this short window with the shortest daylight, with blizzards and holiday season, when people are also afraid to go out because of the pandemic. All right. And we're talking about a plant that's legally sold in New York called, let's talk about hops. It has a cousin named cannabis, and when it's distilled and processed, hops leads to a very problematic substance which people profit heavily from in Long Beach. Cannabis, however, has many medicinal benefits, and it treats depression, and it treats anxiety. There's a lot of people, not the 350 that were able to be included in the petition, but thousands of neighbors here who I love and treat as family and would do anything I possibly can for these people. And I don't think it's right to think of this in a 20th century fear-mongering way of, this is not the type of people we want to have here. I think the fear mongers are the people who I don't think should be around here. The, the thing that we're opting out of, just to be clear, is 40% of revenue dedicated to New York State Community Grant Funds. Qualified, community-based, nonprofit organizations and local governments would be eligible to apply for funding to support job placement and skill services, adult education, mental health treatment, substance use disorder treatment, housing, community banking, nutrition services, services to address adverse childhood experiences, after-school and childcare services, systems navigation services, legal services to address barriers to reentry, linkages to medical care, women's health services, and other community-based supportive services. To, to further support the social and economic equity program, furthering participation of equity applications in the cannabis industry, this, this is $1.5 million annually that we would have been having, and we just took the spoons out of every person who would have needed that out of their mouth. And we were trying to bring a referendum so that it could be done democratically. We're not saying it has to be done, but let the people vote for it. And I just hope that you have the insight, because of where our money status is currently, our budget, to say, there's a light with, with trying to let people have a referendum and vote on this. And I think you have the power to have that referendum here this year now so that we don't have any more time wasted. You know, people are saying how this marijuana is a crime issue, and $5 billion more is spent on the New York City Police Department than the entire Ukrainian military, and we don't have a lot of things going for that. So I just hope that we can see this is a plant, and it's not that difficult to try and legalize it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Naham, I'd just like to respond to a couple of things. First of all, even though I wasn't on the council that voted to opt out, they had no choice because the way the state set this up, you're talking about it was done the last few days. It was ridiculous that the state said, well, you have to do this now before we even put out what we're going to do.
You could have opted in. You didn't have to opt out. Then let the people decide, I'm not going to shop there.
Wait, it was the only option.
But now that plant is illegal to sell, to be sold here.
To time, to opt out. The state said, if you don't opt out now, you never can, but you can always opt back in. That's what the state said.
Yeah, but everybody else opted out. It was Long Beach who was the last one. You could have done it earlier, and then we would have had longer daylight to try and collect the signatures. That's not what happened. And I know you weren't on the, on the city council at that time.
No, I know.
But that's the fact.
But I think.
They had a choice.
I think where the blame goes is the state did not prepare this properly.
The blame could have been that Cuomo shouldn't have had an opt-out period.
That might be true. The other thing, though, that you have to understand is, state law does not allow us to have a referendum. You just asked for a referendum. They do not allow us to have a referendum at this point. Referendums, and Mr. Barrios can address this, referendums are only for specific statutory events.
Rich, could you just address that for a second?
Right.
He does it so much better than I do.
I can try. That's a lot of pressure. So New York is a state where the only way you get referendums or voter initiatives are one of two ways. Either the state lets. choice because the way the state set this up, you're talking about it was done the last few days, it was ridiculous that the state said, well, you have to do this now before we even put out what we're going to do.
You could have opted in. You didn't have to opt out. Then let the people decide, I'm not going to shop there.
It was the only option.
But now that plant is illegal to be sold here.
To time, to opt out. The state said, if you don't opt out now, you never can, but you can always opt back in. That's what the state said.
Yeah, but everybody else opted out. It was Long Beach who was the last one. You could have done it earlier, and then we would have had longer daylight to try and collect the signatures. That's not what happened. And I know you weren't on the city council that time.
No, I know.
But that's the fact.
But I think.
They had a choice.
I think where the blame goes is the state did not prepare this properly.
The blame could have been that Cuomo shouldn't have had an opt-out period.
That might be true. The other thing, though, that you have to understand is state law does not allow us to have a referendum. You just asked for a referendum. They do not allow us to have a referendum at this point. Referendums, and Mr. Barrios can address this, referendums are only for specific statutory events.
Rich, could you just address that for a second?
Right.
He does it so much better than I do.
I can try. That's a lot of pressure. So, New York is a state where the only way you get referendums or voter initiatives are one of two ways. Either the state legis expressly authorizes it, like they did here in the MRTA, or there are permissive or mandatory referenda under municipal home rule law, which is literally just a list of things. This doesn't fall under that.
Home rule.
Home rule law, municipal home rule law. Yeah, it's a state law.
So this municipality has its own ways to try and make a referendum happen that's not connected to the state?
No. At least, listen, I can't give you legal. What I'm saying is, is the state of New York specifically, we can't just force a voter initiative unless the state ledge allows us to do so. That's the catch-22.
So just one question. The city of Long Beach, not necessarily the city council, but the city of Long Beach, if you want to have a referendum on this, we would have to go through the state legislature as one of those parts of the process?
We couldn't do it anymore because basically when the state ledge passed the MRTA, that was the window for the permissive referendum, right? And that's what triggered us having, or the city having to opt out, and triggering all the timeframes in which you guys had to act.
My question wasn't about this specific referendum. I'm saying a general referendum.
You can't do a general referendum.
There are specific criteria that are allowed to be called for a referendum. Rich doesn't have those, you know, at the ready right now, but this topic is not one of them. So the MRTA gave us that one shot at a referenda, and now the matter, the council has voted on it. However, at this point, the council always has the opportunity to vote in if it so chooses. So the council is monitoring the situation as the legislation and the codes develop, so nothing is off the table.
I hope you do opt in.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Linda Kwakawski. I live at 106 Atlantic Avenue in Long Beach. I was also working with the grassroots group that was trying to put together the referendum for the retail cannabis opt-in. So after, and I completely recognize and respect and am aware that you guys are continually monitoring it, and so right now, we just received a lot of local attention from it, The Patch, Herald, Newsday, all of those good folks, and we heard that Long Beach residents were concerned that cannabis is a gateway drug. So I'm pretty much just looking to take this opportunity right now to simply provide some data points that will discredit the myth, and then hopefully we can have fruitful discussion and conversation in other meetings and right now, you know, months to come before you guys have that ultimate decision sort of timeline. First and foremost, chronologically, most users of illicit substances first experiment with either alcohol or tobacco. Have studies provided by the Journal School of Health findings show that alcohol is the most used substance. The National Institute on Drug Abuse has developed a marijuana fact sheet, and it clearly states that majority of people who use marijuana do not go on to use other harder illicit substances. Last year, the National Bureau of Economic Research leveraged data across all 50 states and DC to explore the broader impacts of recreational marijuana laws, or what's considered RMLs. The studies found that there was little to no compelling evidence to suggest that recreational marijuana laws result in increase in illicit drug use, arrests for Part I offenses, drug-involved overdoses, or drug-related treatment admissions for addiction. Pretty much also wanted to mention here, I think we're all well aware of the opioid epidemic, and wanted to say that cannabis offers a viable alternative to opioids. Cannabis use is associated with greater rates of opioid use treatment, retention. Cannabis offers a viable alternative to the opioids, and I think Long Beach has an opportunity to acknowledge the safety and efficacy of marijuana as an alternative medical treatment by sort of supporting the retail cannabis sales here in the city. So ultimately, just wanted to sort of state that there is no sort of solid evidence to support that cannabis is a gateway drug. It's sort of an antiquated theory, and I hope that we could have, again, some open discussion, like hear each other out about sort of what is useful for you guys. I think my question formally to you is, you know, what information and supporting data would be beneficial to help you assess your decision? What can we provide to you guys to help have a better informed decision?
Again, the situation is fluid. We're really looking for guidance from the Office of Cannabis Management to really see how the facilities would be set up and how the, you know, the drug would be administered. Again, projections on revenue of sales and sales tax would also be helpful, and then again, feedback from the community would be helpful as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to acknowledge the presence of City Manager Gaden.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little late.
The flight was late. Do we have another gentleman that wanted to speak? Yes, sir?
Hi, can you hear me? Testing, testing. How's that?
Okay.
All right, cool. My name's Kyle Pace. I live at 18 Vintage Street in the Canals. I also helped gather petitions in the blizzard from a few weeks ago. I have a few things to say. I'll keep it short and sweet. I apologize. So I'd just like to challenge an idea.
Is my mic on? Can you just check and see if the button is on?
Could you just like hit it or something?
How's that?
Thank you.
Speak loud.
Yeah, you got it. I'd just like to challenge an idea I've heard come up in the council meetings that cannabis dispensaries and consumption sites would somehow make our city less safe or less family-friendly. My family's lived in Long Beach for the better part of 60 years. I grew up and graduated from Long Beach High School. During this time, I've come to know and love many people who happen to use cannabis, some as medicine, some to increase their enjoyment of a Pink Floyd album. They're mothers, doctors, engineers, family, and good neighbors. They aren't a scourge of the community, and they certainly don't care about getting our children into recreational drug use. While we were petitioning, the most surprising thing to me was how many folks wanted to sign our petition, but felt afraid to put their name on paper. While I'm hopeful this stigma will dissipate eventually as generations live with legalized cannabis, it still struck me that people in our community felt scared or ashamed to display their opinion for something that's totally legal. If we're serious about reversing the trend of overdose and addiction, we'll concentrate our efforts towards reducing the unregulated market. As somebody who's lived here my whole life, I can tell you that while we are a safe community, we've always been saturated with illicit substances. We all know this. I'm sure the police commission can speak to this. We had a great conversation earlier this week with Police Chief Paul Storty from Great Barrington, Massachusetts. Great Barrington legalized cannabis in 2018 with the first dispensary opening in 2019. Since then, there have been five dispensaries within city limits. According to him, there have been no substantial upticks in crime, no increased possession by minors, and most importantly, the black market has been effectively eradicated. When asked about reduction effect on stick-ups and other sort of like drug deal-related crimes at downstream effect, he said he hasn't had one in just about over three years. There's been no sort of residual crime as a result of like a drug interaction, right, or buying drugs from somebody. Great Barrington's a population of 10,000 and generates about $3 million a year in tax revenue from the sale of cannabis. Here we have a million-dollar shortfall in the budget, as we alluded to earlier, so. I believe that getting rid of the black market is the safest thing we can do as a community. Opting in to legalize sales is the fastest way to eradicate the unregulated drug market. Adding legalized dispensaries does not increase our community saturation rate. As I've already mentioned, we all know here, it's already saturated. We can shift the market from unregulated to regulated. We have control. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions from the public? All right, thank you, Dave.
Okay, item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase bunker gear for the Long Beach Fire Department under New York State contract.
I think you're the, this item and the next one, so get comfortable.
Joseph Miller, Fire Commissioner. At this time, the Long Beach Fire Department is in need of replacing outdated and non-NFPA compliant bunker gear for members of the department. This safety equipment is necessary to protect the members of the department that are entering fires and are called upon other types of hazardous environments. Under the federal OSHA law 1910.156 for fire brigades, the employer shall provide at no cost the employee protective clothing while performing firefighter duties. Funding for this purchase is available in the Fire Department budget account for fire safety equipment. The purchase falls under the state bid process, and the manufacturer Honeywell for its responder products, and our distributor High Tech Fire and Safety are listed on the state contract list. NFPA standards dictate the firefighter safety equipment has a 10-year lifespan from date of manufacturer. Somebody who's being replaced by this purchase are past that recommended time by a few years. We are currently in need of 25 jackets, 25 pants, 25 helmets, and 25 pairs of boots. This is a liability issue that needs to be addressed immediately, and our proactive approach to meeting the department and the city's needs for safety is being met. The length of time needed to manufacture these sets and for us to accept delivery would be about four months. In my professional opinion, the firefighters would be best protected by purchasing the new bunker gear.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll start off by asking, are these for the career firefighters, or the volunteers, or both?
It's for both.
Okay. And also, are they customized for, fit for an individual, or?
Correct. They come down, they measure, and it's fit specifically for that person.
And how did you choose the individuals that would get the new gear?
We went by who needed the gear the most, which ones are outdated the most, and who's the most active persons that are going to be using it.
And who decided this?
I did, and the chiefs.
Very good. Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions?
I do.
Roy, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Several. You say this, after 10 years, the gear is expired?
NFPA gives it a 10-year lifespan.
But what is OSHA? We're not an NFPA state.
NFPA is a guideline. It sets the standards that should be used.
A manufacturer's group, as I understand.
No, they're the guidelines for the standards throughout the country.
Right, but it's not.
They recommend the 10 years, and also the producer's Honeywell also has a 10-year warranty on the gear for 10-year service.
Does OSHA require 10 years?
I don't think OSHA does require, I'm not sure exactly what they're going to require.
If you bought gear and it was never used, it would still be replaced after 10 years?
According to the standards, yes.
So how much of our gear is over 10 years old?
Right now, about 50%.
Do you mean the relevant gear? Just the gear that we're referring to here?
Correct. There was stuff that we're replacing right now.
So only 50% of the stuff that we're replacing right now is over 10 years?
No, overall, for the department.
So the bunker gear, of the bunker gear?
The ones that we're replacing right now all need to be replaced. They're all exceeded their lifespan.
They're all over 10 years old?
Or damaged that they need to be replaced.
Well, when our bunker gear is damaged, who repairs it right now?
Well, it depends. If it's a slight damage to it where it can be repaired, there are places around that do the repairs. If it's damaged beyond the point of use, it has to be replaced.
And you say some of it has been out of date now for more than two years?
Some of our stuff is out of date, yes.
For more than two years, you said?
Possibly, yeah.
Yeah, how many pieces with that?
I don't have that information on me.
Okay. Now, the question is, I understand that firefighters need their gear and stuff like that, but on the paid firefighters, the professionals, they're given a equipment allowance every month, every year, I'm sorry. They have a uniform allowance and an equipment allowance. Isn't that equipment allowance supposed to take care of this equipment?
For maintenance, not replacement.
But in the contract, it clearly says that it's only provided one time when they come in.
Correct. The city is obligated under the contract to provide the one time, and they receive the money for maintenance going forward.
Right.
But it doesn't say in the contract that the member replaces it. They're just there to maintain it. OSHA requires that the city provide this gear for them to do their job.
So have we been doing that in the past?
Prior to me, I can't say.
Because, you know, the contract seems pretty clear. It shall be the responsibility of each member to maintain such gear with the equipment maintenance allowance provided by the city.
Correct.
So that's 650. So what I don't understand is, my understanding is that the 650 is put aside, and then if they need new gear, they can use that money. Over the 10 years, that's 6,500. The gear costs $4,000.
The definition of maintenance is to maintain something in good working order. It doesn't say to replace it. So we're going, I'm taking a proactive approach and making sure all the firefighters, paid and volunteer, have the necessary equipment to do their jobs. If their gear is expired, I'm not going to be the one that wants to put them in danger by not providing the gear.
No, no, but I'm just trying to see if we're paying twice for this gear.
That's a contractual thing. That would have to be taken up during negotiations.
Right.
But right now, no. The way I read it, no, we're not paying twice. They're receiving money for maintaining the gear, so if they have minor defects, they can replace it.
So they, if their gear is torn or something like that, they have to repair it? It's not sent out?
Oh, it is sent out, but they're responsible for the maintenance of it. So if something got torn where it was still usable, it just had to be repaired, a small amount, they're responsible for the maintenance of that.
What does that mean, though?
They have to pay for the repair.
Do they?
If it's made, I would have to check. If it's damaged enough that they need to, we would have to ask.
Because my understanding is the city pays for that repair, and always has.
That I do not know. I've never seen that before.
Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Did you discuss that at the Fire Board of Commissioners meeting last Wednesday?
No.
Are you going to?
Am I going to? Yeah, I would definitely bring that up.
Okay, that's a great place to discuss that. Thank you. Any other questions, any council? Mr. Bendo?
I assume every firefighter, whether volunteer or paid, is issued bunker gear when they become a member of the force, correct?
Correct.
When a member stops participating, is their gear, do they keep their gear, or is their gear put back into circulation?
No, their gear is put back into service, and it's given to the next person coming in.
Okay. Because I was just, you know, one of the things like we discovered, because we're voting on the LoSAP tonight as well, is there's a number of people that don't respond on calls anymore, and so they turn their gear into other use?
In our department, we have classifications, classification, Class A or Class B firefighter. Class A are interior firefighters, Class B are exterior. With the NFPA standards and OSHA, the interior Class A ones have to have the newer gear. Exterior can use the older gear because they're not going inside to the hazardous environment. So we are taking care of all the Class As right now, and we still have more to go to make sure they have the proper gear.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my question was if somebody's not responding anymore, their gear can be used by others if they're not using it anymore. Okay. And I, yeah, that's it for me.
Commissioner Miller, are paid professional and volunteer firefighters both classified into A and B, or just the volunteers?
Well, you could have that with the paid side, but that'd be someone who would be on light duty that's not functioning as a full firefighter. The paramedics were not firefighters, so they are not Class As in any way. The volunteers, we have both A and B, because some members are able to go inside and meet all the requirements to do so, where others might not, and they're still contributing by being outside.
Okay, so I can tell you, as not being a firefighter, the distinguishing between the paid and the volunteer is really helpful in the dialogue, because to me, I can't tell if the bunker gear, you know, first of all, goes to paid and volunteer, or if Class A, Class B.
Out of this purchase, 10 of them are going to the career, and 15 are going to the volunteer.
Okay.
I just have a question in regard to, is there an inventory list that, you know, is somewhere or that can be universal, just so we know?
Yes.
Just so that we don't have, you know, all these questions all the time, and we just say, okay, yeah.
Yes, the Fire Department has done inventories of the equipment that we do have.
I think what would be helpful is that we are going to be doing inventory. Each firefighter has gear, and what we should do, and what we could talk about, is putting the dates on the gear. So if the gear is 10 years old.
Well, just to interrupt, when they're manufactured, they have a date. All equipment has dates of when it was manufactured, and you go by that.
Right. And so that the council will be able to see that if, and then the question should not arise, how old is the equipment, and what is the standards for the equipment, so that everybody knows that CDBG gives us money, and I asked CDBG to fund some more bunker gear. Because of the bunker gear that we're replacing, as he stated, at least 50%. That what we're replacing does not constitute the 50%. So unless CDBG gives us money, each year, there will be bunker gear in the, in the So unless CDBG gives us money, each year, there will be bunker gear in the budget.
Right.
And so what we'll do is, we will create an inventory, and we, our inventory list that will list the age of the bunker gear, and that we want to, as administrations, to make sure that our firefighters, whether they are paid, or whether they're volunteers, that they're equipped with the proper equipment to fight the fires that they need, and that we keep them safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go far.
Okay. Does the public have any questions about this item? Yes, sir?
Jordan Levitt, Engine Company Number Two, 54 Arizona. I'm one of two members within the fire department that's certified to inspect and categorize this gear. I think I can add a little light on the situation. So in regards to OSHA and NFPA, NFPA is the organization that standardizes all protective equipment within the fire department. Everything from trucks to bunker gear to hand tools, every other piece of equipment. In regards to bunker gear, OSHA actually, in their, you know, category for bunker gear, references NFPA standard. So they say very clearly that it is the NFPA standard by the line item that makes up the standard for bunker gear and when it should be replaced. The 10-year time period for bunker gear is the only standard within the entire NFPA catalog, which is a huge reference material, 4,000 some odd pages. It is the only one that's actually mandated with a timeframe of expiration. It's very clear in there that it says everything else is suggested, but when it comes to the 10-year timeframe, it's a mandate. They've had huge conversations about this over the years, and it has to do with the degradation of the materials themselves, increases in the quality level of the product as time goes by, the technological, you know, products themselves. So whether it sits on a shelf, or whether it's used, it still expires in 10 years. But there's one other really important note. They actually categorize the level of damage and the amount of repairs that every piece of bunker gear is allowed to withstand. So if you have an article of bunker gear that's one year old, and it's damaged, there's a certain dollar amount or percentage of the gear that can be repaired at one years old. By the time it reaches seven, eight years old, it's virtually beyond repair. You can't spend the money to fix it, because they simply say it shouldn't be fixed at this point, it should be replaced. So they say the 10 years on the outside, they're saying that if the gear is damaged by, you know, excessive heat, if it's discolored, if it's torn in a way where it can't be properly repaired, it may need to be retired in one year. And one other quick thing to note is that when new members come on the fire department, paid members receive brand-new gear when they come on the fire department made to measure. Volunteers are generally given hand-me-down gear, and it's only after a period of time that they've, you know, come around enough and their percentage is high enough, that they're then potentially issued new gear which is fit for them. So, you know-
So my question would be, in this particular case, my understanding is that most of this gear had timed out, so to speak.
It's more than timing out, yes. Everything that's on the list has timed out.
Timed out, yeah.
So we're not even considering the gear that's slightly damaged. We're only looking at gear that's either significantly damaged beyond the ability to repair it, or has been timed out.
But my understanding was most of it was timed out?
Yes, yeah. There's a huge number.
So we would know when we buy the gear, that it's got a useful life of 10?
Absolutely.
10 years. And so we would theoretically put money aside for, you know, a tenth of the purchase price. Is that ever done?
That's well above my pay grade. However, what I could say is that it makes sense that we should be taking a portion of the budget each year to replace gear, so that it is staggered, and it's a little bit less expensive. I think we're playing a little bit of catch-up right now, because we do have quite a bit of gear that's substantially damaged or beyond the date, but eventually, we will get to the point where it becomes a maintainable dollar amount each year.
Now, can you talk to me about maintenance of the gear?
Sure.
I'm very confused about that.
Wait, I think, Commissioner Miller, is that your purview, the maintenance of the gear?
He's certified to inspect, so if he just bought, he would give a answer.
Yes, sir, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. So there are a few different ways that gear is maintained. Number one, we have to maintain the gear after every fire scene, so when that gear is exposed to heat, or is exposed to the chemicals of a fire, it needs to be washed correctly. Currently, we only have one set of washer-dryers, which is the correct approved washer-dryer in order to wash that gear, which we have at headquarters. I think it's an eventual plan that we add another set of washer-dryers, because it's simply not enough. When we have a large fire like we had at Sorrento's, you can have 100 firefighters who need to wash their gear, and unfortunately, those chemicals are hugely caustic to the gear itself, so it's important to get it washed thoroughly and quickly. As far as general maintenance goes, we do have a list of criteria whenever we check the gear, and we're inspecting the gear once yearly. So we check the gear for a number of things. We check it for discoloration, we check it for torn seams, we check to make sure that the vapor barriers are intact, that all the snaps and buckles work the way that they're supposed to. And then we have to, you know, use a little bit of common sense to try to figure out, okay, which are really the priorities. And like the commissioner said, you know, you have members that are, you know, highly active members, or paid members, that they're going to go through gear quicker, and then you have others that, you know, show up on the big alarms and their gear lasts longer. But, you know, it's an intensive process to maintain this gear, and from a safety standpoint, it's a huge safety issue. Another, just very quick point that you might want to research on, is that there's now an ongoing investigation into some of the chemicals that are being used in the vapor barriers of bunker gear. They're found themselves to be cancer-causing. So there may come a time, and this may be many years in the future, but there may come a time where the government simply says, all bunker gear now has to meet a new standard. But that's just something, it's not, we're not talking in the next couple of years, it's something that's going to happen eventually.
So in the maintenance, if something's torn, do you guys fix it, or do-
No, no, no.
It goes out?
Yeah, so there are a few companies that are certified to fix bunker gear. They have to be companies that are approved by the manufacturer. Where I received my training on checking bunker gear is the same company that FDNY uses to repair their bunker gear, and we can send gear to them, and they make the repairs and send it back to us. Now, interestingly enough, if you send them gear that's out of date, they won't repair it. So they're the ones who make the determination on whether the gear can be repaired or not.
Thank you.
Can I just say, one question before you step down. Since the 10-year effective useful life of the gear starts from date of manufacture, not date of first use, is bunker gear generally manufactured when ordered, or, I mean, do you buy stuff that's been sitting on a shelf for eight months, or it's usually made to order?
It's custom fitted.
It's custom fitted, so they're made to order. So you're getting the brand-new gear when you buy? Okay.
There's a certain amount of inventory that we have to keep in stock, as far as, you know, helmets go, or gloves and things like that, that are wearable items, but, yeah, but the bunker gear is made to order.
Okay.
I just had a question for both of you. I think, as far as I know, there's four active chiefs in the volunteers department, is that correct?
Correct.
Is one of those chiefs responsible for gear?
Yes, one chief is in charge of equipment.
So that chief maintains the inventory list?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We just did an inventory just a month ago, anticipation with this, and we went through everything. That's why we are prepared, we do have a list already of everyone in the department.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. And just so, which is, we're clear, NFPA standards are yearly inspections, like we just did, through people that are trained to do it. We also do inspections every time we use the gear, you know, whether it's going to drill on a call, and getting on the truck. Someone sees something, they're going to say something. So all the times, it's being looked at.
Excellent.
It's just done more thoroughly at a yearly time.
Got it. And council members, any other questions? Any questions from the public? Ms. Heson?
Brandon Coons, Long Beach resident, city fireman.
Hello, sir.
I think we should use the weed revenue to pay for the new bunker gear.
So you've got to love Long Beach.
Eileen Heson, Long Beach. I just wanted to thank the firefighter for all the information that he gave, because I had a lot of questions, because as we all know, we are broke, and this is a sad year to have to spend $100,000. But the safety of our firefighters is the most important thing, so we do have to bite the bullet. My question was, you know, did all 25 people join the force at the same time, but I guess some of it is older than 10 years. In any event, I wanted to thank Donna for having the idea of inventorying things, so that we know, because there has to be oversight on some of these things. I don't mean the firefighters especially, I mean all of the things that we buy. Sometimes I sit here and I think, who vetted that? Who chose to buy that? Or who chose to put that much money in something? And I just wonder sometimes. So I'm glad, Donna, that you're going to, you know, put the year on the things when they come in, or whatever it is that you're going to do with this, and I hope that continues with everything that we do. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. One of the things I want to say is, is this on? One of the things I want to say is, the bunker gear, the $100,000 that was to be spent was in the budget. This new administration, over the last two years, have looked at everything, and when you can't-
Close.
All right, can you hear me now? All right, this administration, over the last two years, have done everything that they can do to save money, and we budgeted for this new bunker gear. The $100,000 is coming that we had out of the budget. So when, we have a good executive team, we have a good team that works for the city. It's not like it was when I first got here. So when we bring something to the council for it to be voted on so we can purchase, believe me, it's been vetted to the best way it can be done. It's whatever, we've gone through the proper procedures. So I want the audience to know that when we bring something for it to be voted on to purchase, it's not that we just pick something out of the air. Believe me, we went through everything. We dotted our i's, we crossed our t's, and we made sure that what we were getting was going to be safe, and it was economically safe for everyone. If we buy something that's outside of the budget, we let the council know that it is outside of the budget. But just as you said, thank you, Eileen, for that. This $100,000 that you're saying that we, you know, having to spend, it was budgeted for, and now we're purchasing. And if, again, if we're going to buy something outside of the budget, we will let the council know that this is something that we had to get, we have to go into contingency, and this is the reason why we didn't budget for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna, and thank you for the level of excellence that you've really brought to the, in everything that the city does. Next item? Oh, I'm sorry, did I forget the public again?
Mary.
Ms. Volossevich?
I would suggest that whoever does the gear, make a list for the next time you have to make a purchase like this. This way, you're ready for it, and it's in the budget, like Donna just said. When do you need the next group of 25, 20, 30, whatever it is? Because obviously, it's going to be coming up, and $100,000, if you put the money aside, it's not such a shock.
Thank you.
So that's what they should be working on, the next group that's going to be needed.
Thank you. It's empowering our department heads to be responsible for their own budgets, and working with the administration to make sure they get everything they need to do their jobs to the best of their ability. Any other questions from the public?
Okay. Item four is a resolution authorizing the approval of a list of eligible volunteer firefighters for the 2021 Length of Service Award Program, LoSAP Service Credit.
Commissioner Miller?
The Long Beach Fire Department LoSAP program is an award program that offers benefits to the volunteer members and EMS personnel of the department pursuant to General Municipal Law Section 216. As per New York State General Business Law, Article 11A, Section 217, one year of firefighting service must be credited under a service award program for each calendar year, in which an active volunteer firefighter accumulates at least 50 points. These points include members' attendance in alarms, drills, standbys, meetings, and training classes throughout the calendar year. To be eligible to receive these benefits, members must reach the age of 65 years old and have had 20 years of active service in the department. I ask that the city council approve the list of names that have been provided and certified as to reaching the 50-point requirement for the calendar year of 2021.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
I have a couple. This basically, this program is, gives the firefighters some compensation after they've done 20 years.
And reached 65 years of age.
Right. So what if you've done 25 or 30? You still get the same? It's limited?
Our plan, which is the bottom plan, the lowest one we can get, no, it doesn't change. Once you reach that 65, 20 years, the money stays the same. It doesn't matter if you do 25 or 30.
Now, I understand we're kind of unique in that, that most municipalities go, or townships or whatever, go higher than the 20?
Correct. Most are, I think, we're the last one at this level.
And we're talking about to increase the level, so that you reward somebody for 25 or 30 years? I believe we-
We would, yeah, we discussed that at the fire board meeting, it's something we would like to do-
That's why I'm bringing it up, yes.
-in the future, that we can discuss with the council, but yes, we'd like to increase it in the future.
And, you know, what is the longest fireman we have right now? How many years of service? Is that you, Scott?
Douglas has got in in 1957, 56, I'm sorry, 56. So, that's a lot.
Lot of years. I don't think they, we could go up to 50, something like that. But relatively speaking, if I understand, to even go up to, you know, 40, would only cost us about another additional $90,000? Is that correct?
I don't have the exact number. Yes, Scott's saying yes. He knows the program in and out. So yes, it would.
And how many firefighters do we have that go over the 20 years? Scott probably knows that off the top of his head.
Go ahead.
Does it have anything to do with the resolution? Does it have anything to do with that?
We probably have at least 40 to 50 that are over the 20 years, me being one of them. So when I hit my 20 years, probably about eight years ago, in the program, because the program didn't start until the mid-'90s, I'm maxed out. So there's no incentive to me to make calls, except I still want to make calls, even though my wife will argue that point. But the whole idea of the program is an incentive for the volunteers to continue to respond. Once we've made that 20 years, that incentive is gone, but we actually still have a very large dedicated group of people, a lot of them back there tonight, are like me, and have over those 20 years, and they're some of our most active members.
Scott, you know I hate spending money, but this is, you know, one of those things to, you know, which would benefit that many people.
I'm in full agreement with you.
Less than the bunker gear.
I'm not clear what this has to do with the resolution, though. What you're proposing is something that should be discussed at the Board of Fire Commission isn't brought forward.
Yes, because-
But that's not, doesn't have to do with this resolution.
Because this is where the, we're talking about these-
No, 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 we're not disputing that what you're saying is not a good idea. What we're saying is that something-
No, no, it's germane to this.
No.
Okay. All right, forget it, forget it, how you ever said anything, okay?
So I have a question again. This runs us about over $100,000 a year in the budget, correct, this program?
No, it's 90.
$90,000? Okay, last time I thought it was 100.
It fluctuates based upon the actuarial rates.
Yes.
The actuary looks at it every year, so it can fluctuate anywhere from the- So it can fluctuate anywhere from the 90s to 105. It's been, and there are some years that city administrations have skipped paying into the program.
That's right.
Which then, you know, obviously this program is audited by the auditors every year and it's supposed to be funded by a certain percentage.
Right.
We happen to be fairly well-funded and with Ina and Donna here, they've been, you know, putting in the money that needs to be in there. And once again, it is a budgeted number. It's not money we don't have budgeted.
Right. And then the recipient, once they hit the criteria and stop working, they get a one-time payment and then that's it, correct?
Well, they have a choice of a one-time payment or monthly installments.
Over how long?
They don't have to stop either.
Okay.
The member, our members still come around. They reach their mark, their benchmark, and we still have members that still come after that. Like Scott said, it's not so much the money, it's our members are devoted to doing the job.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, just one. Each year when we get the list of people and the point totals and things like that, there's typically a decent number of people that have like zero responses over the course of the year. Are those like retired members that just are maintained on the roster?
Correct.
Like emeritus members or something?
Some of them might be inactive life members who are out of state or those people just didn't make it that year. For whatever reason, everyone has their own story.
Right, so some of the retired members, some of the retired members may be maintained on the list.
Of course, of course.
Okay, that's, I was just...
Okay. Any questions from the public? Okay.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase two police utility vehicles for the city under a Sourcewell contract.
Okay, Commissioner Walsh?
Good evening, everybody. The resolution in front of you is for the police department to purchase two Polaris Rangers. They're the XP-1000, I'll just call them ATVs for now. We currently have a total of four ATVs, if you will. Two of them are in, I would say, fair at best condition. The other two are much more serviceable. We decided to purchase these vehicles and put it in the plan. It is a budgeted item in our capital project budget. When we bid these out, I asked my staff and more specifically my fleet manager, the guy I use for fleet management is Sergeant Corbett, to actually go through and see if we can do the best we possibly could for pricing. So we actually went outside of state, the state bid, and went to, into something called Sourcewell, which is a contract or a group that the city is actually a member of. And we were able to save an additional $12,000 off of the price of these particular vehicles. There's, I have tons of information in my head about our fleet and these particular vehicles, if you have any questions about it. But these particular vehicles that we're purchasing, these ATVs that we're purchasing, for the two of them, it's $37,379.12. They're equipped the way we need them to be, including lights and windshield and stuff like that. They're also a fast response vehicle. They're used year-round for us, like we use them during the polo bear plunge and times like that. They're also used when our officers are out on patrol on the beach and other officers are engaged. These vehicles will go on the street and they can get to a response at a reasonable, a quick speed. We don't want to have something out that isn't actually used as a quick response vehicle, which is one of the reasons why we didn't choose another one of the manufacturers. Like we have one now called a mule. It's very slow, it goes 12 miles an hour. And if you're in an emergency situation, you wouldn't want us driving there 12 miles an hour to get there. You want us to get there quick.
Maybe that's why it's called a mule.
What's that?[842.26][842.26](Laughter). Yeah, I think that's why they called it a mule. I think that's about right, yeah. So if anybody has any questions, I mean, we're then happy to answer them.
Commissioner, are you saying that, I thought I saw several emails of questions from the council members on this. Are you saying that the usage of this is not customary for a regular vehicle or something?
So this particular vehicle is a two-man vehicle. It's not restrictive, a normal ATV like you think about is a single-man vehicle. This one we use for patrol at night with our officers on beach patrol and oftentimes we'll put them together. We also use it during the day. We put out four ATVs, if you will, every single day during the summer. We only have four right now. So when one breaks, we're not putting out, when one is in need of repair, we don't put out a patrol, we'll put somebody else on foot. Unfortunately, there have been times over the last year where we've had two and sometimes even three of our vehicles, ATVs, were down. So we're taking from the lifeguards or something else and they are not the same vehicle. The lifeguards use a mule. They generally are transporting the vehicles at a much, using the vehicles at a much low rate. They transport equipment and they just ferry people around. They didn't use it as a fast response vehicle like the police department does, which is one of the reasons why we're actually looking for these specific. We did look at, John Deere has a model of this in particular, but each John Deere police-rated ATV, two-person, was over $45,000 as we looked at them, where they were equipped. So we're getting two of these for $37,000.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Yes.
Tina?
Mine's quick. I just, I just wondered, Commissioner, what happens to the ones that are nearing the end of their useful lives? Is there like a trade-in program or anything where we can...
By the time we're done with them, there's really no value. We actually have a few over in the boneyard there that, there's just no value to them. I mean, we'll try to auction them off, but we won't get much. One of our, one of our mule right now, the hole under the carriage is rusted and we don't expect it to last a lot longer. But what we'll do with those is we'll get them into a state of readiness so that at least we can use them if one of these four that hopefully we have as good service vehicles breaks, we can just substitute another vehicle into it for the time being.
Okay.
And whilst being repaired.
And you did say they're completely street illegal?
These are used as fast response vehicles. You couldn't register this as a car. It's a different vehicle, but it is permitted to be on the street for us, yes.
It is. And they can carry a stretcher in the back?
I would say these you could. We wouldn't, we don't normally outfit them that way. When they're outfitted that way, you lock the stretcher in the back. But if we had to move a person off of the beach in an emergency like that, they could be useful for that. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, any questions from the public? Yes, Ms. Heschin?
Eileen Heschin, Long Beach. $37,000 sounds like a drop in the bucket. That's the cheapest thing I've heard in a long time up here, so that's good. I do wonder sometimes, though, we have such beautiful cars on the road. I'm talking in general about the fleet that we have. They all look like they're brand-new, even the ones that are driven by the traffic control. I have asked many times and even gone upstairs, not to you, Donna, this is years ago, do we have a fleet manager? Is there somebody that takes care of all these cars? We have a big garage, but do we use the mechanics there? Do they do all the repairs? Or do we send it out to Island Park or what? I don't know. We have so... When I first asked, they said we don't have a list of the number of cars that we have here, which I thought was ridiculous. There is no inventory about that. And I was also assured that no one takes a car home at night, which I know for a fact is not true. So cars are expensive. These cars, these two little things, are not expensive. But I mean, we've got, you know, we used to say, are you going to get a Volkswagen or a Cadillac? And sometimes I think we choose the Cadillac version. Anyway, I think our cars are too expensive. We have a lot of them. Do I have to foil to find out how many we have?
Actually, no, you don't have to foil. It seems like that question has come up from council members as well. Yes, we do have a fleet manager. We also have an inventory of all the cars that we have. In the past, the city had bought software to put all of the information on each individual car and all of the maintenance. We are now in the process of completing that software, so every vehicle that we have is in that software. Every vehicle that we have is on an inventory list. And every vehicle that is taken out that's driven overnight or it is taken home by someone, we know exactly who they are. There are rumors out there of people having take-home vehicles who actually do not have take-home vehicles because we have two or three vehicles in our fleet that can be driven by anyone that needs to take the car home or take the car to the city or wherever. We went on a field trip to some of the other municipalities. We took the Avalanche, which is not driven by an individual. The council will be receiving a vehicle policy, which means that policy will tighten up who can take a vehicle home on a regular basis and who cannot. As far as the mechanics are concerned, we're looking at the garage. However, you need to know that we do have mechanics. We don't have enough mechanics, but we do have mechanics that works on cars. When we have fire trucks or things that the mechanics cannot work on, of course, those things do go out. So there are some things that the mechanics can fix and what we want to do is to make sure that they are fixed and then they will be out. So I don't want people to think that this administration is doing anything outside of what we need to do to save the taxpayers' money. So when you look at a lot of the cars that you see and you say they look really good, there are not, there are a lot of cars, they look good, but they're old and they're costing the city money. So yes, we do have a fleet manager. We do have fleet software that they, we are now putting into place so that we can keep up with every single car, how many miles it has, when the last time it was serviced, what? Oh. As such.
Thank you very much. That is very good news because that is so the opposite of what I heard when I spoke to the person who was in charge of transportation four or five years ago. I'm very happy to hear that. Thank you very much for all that detail.
Oh, you're welcome.
And who is the fleet manager?
Well, currently, there's a couple of people. We have the IT gentleman who's doing the servicing for the, for the software. Greg Scott is also over the garage and he takes care of the fleet management. And also Michael Robinson, who keeps up with the inventory to make sure that the Excel sheets that's been used for years, and I'm not sure when you asked, but when I asked, when I first got here, there was an Excel sheet. And then what I have found since I've been here depends on who you ask on what kind of answer you will get, whether you will get the truth or whether you'll get what they want to tell you and say it doesn't exist.
It was a crazy answer at the time, I'll tell you.
What'd you say?
It was a crazy answer at the time, but nobody knows how many cars there are.
So it's being, it's being taken care of.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Donna, you just brought up about the cars. How many of them have GPS in them?
None.
None?
At this time, no, but that's an expense that has to be budgeted for. And then you have to know that when we put a GPS in a vehicle, if they're in a union, that is a union negotiated item.
Yeah.
You just can't put GPSs in union employees' cars. You have to negotiate that in.
But what about city cars, not a union employee?
You have to negotiate that in. If they get in the car...
So we can't, we can't put them in our garbage trucks or police cars and stuff like that?
It's a union issue. You have to negotiate it in the contract.
And right now, it's not?
It's not in the contract. Not in the contract.
Or any of the contracts?
No.
Nope. Okay. Any other questions from the public? Yes?
Mary Volossevich. Have you ever thought of working with the schools? They're used to working on buses. Have you ever thought of using their mechanics, who know how to work on the buses, and possibly getting rid of the eyesore of a garage and working with the school district in a cooperative thing and bring those mechanics over to there? Has that ever been explored?
We've explored looking into inter-government agreements with other entities. It's something that we have to continue to look at. And thank you, we can reach out to the school and see what, you know, if they have the ability to do that.
You know, you could park your buses there, I'm sure you would know, boy.
Most garages right now don't have that ability.
They have plenty of room for buses, don't they?
The school district has reached out to the city for years to try to...
Oh, they have?
Well, they haven't reached out to the city in the last two years that I've been here.
No.
So, so let's not say that. So we will reach out to the school district and see if that's what we want to do.
I think that would save you money and you could get rid of that building, if possible, sell it and make some revenue for the city.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public on this item? Okay, next item?
Item six is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the County of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended and Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program for the 2022, 23, 48th year. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held March 15th at 7:00 p.m. Item seven is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 966 West Beach Street, street floor for a retail convenience store. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held March 15th at 7:00 p.m. Onto the voting.
Wait, 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 wait. Yeah, right, we don't need a hearing or anything.
Yeah, the hearing's at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're two weeks early. Okay. Onto the voting.
Authorizing the filing of a application. Standby.
If you read in the resolved, in the resolved in the item, it states, it's for scheduling a public hearing for the, for March 15th. This is the same way we do it every year. It's, the hearing is at the next meeting. This is just, yeah, the... I didn't write it.
Okay.
Okay. Onto the voting. Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase bunker gear for the Long Beach Fire Department under New York State contract. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting. Councilmember Postley?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
No.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Treston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the approval of a list of eligible volunteer firefighters for the 2021 Length of Service Award Program, LoSAP Service Credit. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Okay, you want second?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Voting. Councilmember Postley?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo?
Absolutely, yes.
Vice President Treston?
Yes, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your service.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase two police utility vehicles for the city under Sourcewell contract. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting. Councilmember Postley?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Treston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the County of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program under Title of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program under Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended and Title Two of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program for the 22, '23, '48 year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting. Councilmember Postherly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Treston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
And finally, item seven is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 966 West Beach Street, street floor for a retail convenience store. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Thank you. Voting. Councilmember Postherly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Treston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
City manager's monthly personnel report has been filed by the city clerk, who will make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Do I have a second?
I will.
Voting. Councilmember Postherly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Treston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna start Good and Welfare now. Michael Corbett? Thank you. Mary Velosevic?
I have two for two.
Nora Belzy? Eileen Heschen?
I'm just gonna say, I mean, taking attendance.
Eileen Heschen, Long Beach. Can I have their three minutes, too? Giving me nine? Talk fast. I'm just hoping, I'm in a very money mood tonight, that these things come up in new, in city council meetings soon, so that the people can put their ideas forth. A good accounting of the beach revenue, information about the $2 million fire engine, lots of information about the parking meters we listened to already, and frankly, I don't believe we're gonna get $6 million a year out of that, so I need somebody at a city council meeting to truly convince me of that. And the lifeguard chairs. I know we talked about it already, but somebody had a very good idea, I think it was Kathleen O'Leary who suggested that we try to get the...
No?
It was Ms. Donovan.
Oh, sorry. To get the stores to sponsor them, put a big sign up on the back, you know, this is Gino's lifeguard chair, that kind of thing. And that's how we can save some money. So that's what I'd like to see come up in some meetings. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Vining?
Hello. Judy Vining, Long Beach. I just, when you were talking about waiting for the state and regulations, you do know, and I hope you've got somebody monitoring it, that the cannabis, Office of Cannabis Management Board meets once a month and puts forth whatever regulations they're coming out with, and there's a 30-day period for you to respond, or for anyone in the public to respond, actually. So that's kind of important to keep your eye on because they come up with an awful lot of stuff, including lack of restrictions on advertising, things like that, that you can't really touch as a municipality. So that was just an FYI. And in terms of medical versus legal, it is all legal in New York State now. We're not, we're not discussing that. What we're really discussing is access. And that's where, with whatever the substance is, wherever you are, that is the problem in terms of youth. Not that someone is going to absolutely go out of their way to sell to our kids, but it's the messages, and that's part of the reason that multiple cities across the country now, Colorado probably being the one with the longest longitudinal history, where for every dollar they take in, in taxes, they spend $4.50 in services that are now needed, including, including new police services, healthcare, and some of that is written into the martyr law, but it's not to be filtered down this way. It's statewide. Just an FYI. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Labuddy?
I'm going to pass you until next meeting.
All right, thank you. Ron Paganini? Get up here.
Hello. I just wanna say, you know, whatever I say here is not, it's not personal against any individual here, just to give you an update from what I've heard and how I feel. So don't take it to heart.
Okay, Ron.
Don't take this to heart. All right. A lot of, a lot of people actually called me and complained that, and I'm gonna tell you why. And this is the question. Could the president of the council explain, and I'm not saying you did anything wrong, explain why she and others took a city car two weeks ago and went to Suffolk County? All right, let me finish up. Next. Just for the record, this is the latest in the, in the case of the employee who didn't sign in for five years and got paid. So I met with the city manager on January 20th.
And who else? You met with the union?
Yeah, yeah, the union was there. Mr. Barrios was there. And I just wanna say, I met with them to show them and give them copies of the evidence. The city said they would look into the situation internally. I don't know, I know that the city can't speak about this matter, but from what I heard, nothing has been done. But this is, I have to say this for the record. Now, three, is the city aware that the exhaust system in the garage, where the buses are parked, are barely working to suck those fumes out? It's bad news. That's what I was told. On the other side of the garage, where the mechanics work, it's a separate area, the system is not working at all. So, and it's been down a long time. So who's responsible for this? Not you guys. Not you. Because if you don't know what's going on, it's other people that should tell you. This is a safety thing. Those fumes are toxic, especially the ones out of the buses. We put a detergent in there that's highly toxic to clean the exhaust systems. Next, and this one is blowing me away a little, too. Can the city explain why our chief heavy-duty mechanic, and he's a great mechanic, doesn't do mechanic work anymore? He's not, he doesn't have the status of director of the garage like the other, you know, like other people that had the leisure not to work. Heavy-duty mechanic doesn't do any work anymore. His specification states that he works. We need mechanics, and we're short. So, I mean, just look into it. Look at his specs and what's going on. So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paganini.
Thank you.
So the question was, the very first question was, why was a car go to Suffolk County? Myself and other council members were invited to an event, and I and the president here was invited to speak at this event. One, it was to build relationships. Two, the people that invited us, it's the, what's the name of it?
Long Island Builders Institute.
The Long Island Builders Institute are, is the company or the organization that donated the handicap or accessible, accessible playhouse. We made a lot of contacts while we were there. We built some relationships, and we're moving to help move the city forward. So that all of those that are concerned about where the truck goes and whether we're in the county or out of the county, I think what's most important is that what are we doing to help bring in additional money? To, and in one way that you bring in additional money is that you make the contacts, whether it's in Suffolk County, whether it's in Nassau County, or whether it's in Albany, to make sure that we can get what we need to continue to run this city, and that any type of monies that we get will help us if we don't have to use operating funds. Yes, we did meet with you, the group met with you, and you brought up the issues. Again, I would say to you is that any staff member who feels that they can go to you to talk about the problems that are going on to the garage, that's a staff member who needs to be talking to their director. And I have asked you many times to say, if there is an issue within a department, that issue needs to be taken up with the department, not with an outside person who no longer works for the city, but is constantly coming to say what he or she has heard. So I, I encourage you again, for whoever's giving you all the information, to give the information to the people that can make a difference and not say this is what they heard. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I do have a question, though, Donna.
Sure.
The, the fans, that's something that, if it's true, if it's true, concerns me. Had you heard about that before? This is the first time?
Yeah.
Okay. And I guess if nobody comes up and says anything, then it's...
No, you know what? We have, we have individuals within the community, and we have individuals within staffing who feels that their job is to talk to the community versus talking to their supervisors.
Right.
If something comes up, of course, we're gonna look into it. I will have someone look into this.
But nothing has come up at this point?
No, nothing has come up.
I always tell people, follow the chain of command.
Absolutely.
And if nothing's come up, you know, then...
But we will look into every, every topic that he has brought up, we have looked into it. When we deal with personnel, we don't come back to say what has been done. And other members of staff don't know what's been done either. It's not something that we say, oh, did you know so-and-so got, you know, Roy Lester got this or that because he did it? We don't discuss that.
Yes. No, no, I'm just a fan, something exhaust, something that would concern me.
I'll, I'll make sure they check it out tomorrow.
Well, I didn't even ask you to check it out without somebody saying.
Oh, I'm gonna check it out. If it's something that...
But if you're gonna check it out, yeah.
Oh, definitely.
And if you could just let us know.
Sure will.
All right. Thank you so much.
I just wanna say one thing. You know, it's a shame that the employees don't...
It's a shame that these employees don't go to their supervisors or to the city, okay? But for many, many years, if you said anything to your supervisor, you're gonna have, in a way, say to your supervisor that this has to be fixed, or this is not right, or this and that, you were punished. This is how it worked. The fear is there.
Ron, things are different now, and I hold you responsible, you to tell...
Me?
Yeah. You need to tell those folks that they should talk to Donna.
And if they don't? I have an obligation to the city and the people to tell you then, correct?
Yeah.
That's all I wanna know.
Tell those peoples. You, you gotta weigh about you, Ron. Tell them to talk.
The fear is there. You don't understand, you never worked for the city, okay? Believe me, you were not, not only punished by the union, you were punished by the city.
Well, that was then, this is now. And so we can't keep talking about what has happened in the past. We explained to you when we met with you, and then this is the last thing I have to say on the topic, we explained to you is to have the employees come and talk to us. Nobody's going to be punished for telling us that there is something wrong within the garage. So I implore you again, if an employee has an issue, go to the director. If they don't wanna go to the director, come to me so we can have the issue resolved. I'm not in the habit of penalizing somebody for saying that there's something wrong with the city. We're in the habit of trying to move this city forward.
We can do this, Ron.
I, I agree.
Next, next.
Ron, that was your time.
Okay, we gotta go.
I just wanna say one thing.
That was your time, sir.
Whatever you said, whatever you said, put it in a memo and send it to all your employees.
All right, thanks, Ron. Okay, Linda Giles.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, Linda. Am I loud enough? Okay. My name is Linda Giles. I am a 73-year resident of Long Beach. I lived here in the 70s when the city looked like a war zone. Yet I had enough faith that this oceanfront community would make a comeback, that my husband and I bought our second home here. And indeed, we rose from the ashes, as did our property values. This happened through hiring experts who had the vision and knowledge to resurrect the city. We had grants to revitalize our business section. Interest about our waterfront came through developers. Now we're faced with one of our greatest challenges. On the verge of bankruptcy, we must find a way to rise again. We all know how we got here. Patronage, incompetency, political hijinks, and poorly negotiated contracts. Many people have worked hard to get you elected. We saw people who loved the city and wanted to work and thrive. Please, work together to create a city we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Nora Egan?
Nora Egan, I just have something to say about your new rules for Good and Welfare. So I know it says in the charter about giving your address. A couple of years ago, I don't know if some of you remember, some of us suffered from harassment after giving out your address, and the police commissioner at the time kind of brought it up that we really didn't need to give our address, seeing that we're writing it down, and you have it on record.
You just had to say your town.
Yeah, just your name and, I'm from Long Beach. Because if you give out my address, you can get my phone number, which is what happened. So maybe you could change it?
We said, we, in the beginning of the meeting, some people may not have been here, I said it's a work in progress right now, and that's definitely something we will address.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kathleen O'Leary?
Hi, Kathleen O'Leary, Long Beach. Good evening. I wanna say two quick things before I get to the main point. I did not realize on the website that this was an in-person meeting. Just the absence of a Zoom link wasn't enough for me. So in the future, if we have to switch back and forth, maybe a positive statement that what we're doing would be more, it would get my attention, okay?
Okay.
The other thing is the city garage, which seems like we're speaking about a lot today. I wanna point out that that garage was built in the 1920s by Bell Telephone. The City of Long Beach bought it in 1939. I, I don't know about conditions inside. I think the city or OSHA could fix these things. I also know it's not gonna be sold and become a Popeye's, which I'm grateful for. I live by there, I pass it every day. I like the building. I think it's like a calm building as compared to McDonald's and whatever else is up there. There's like a ton of fast food restaurants. And I think it should be landmarked, whether it stays as a garage or it does not, or it doesn't. It should be a landmarked building. It's a preview of the Art Deco architecture that you're going to see all throughout the city once you get here. So I'm pro-city garage. I don't think it's an eyesore. I, I kinda like watching, looking at it every day. Okay, so the main reason I'm here is I was reading one of Mr. Bernstein's columns in The Herald, and this concerns the Haberman Bill, Haberman Deal. It says, "Two consulting firms hired by Long Beach to help negotiate with the developer agreed that some type of tax increase might be needed to construct the necessary infrastructure, such as sewers and roads, to support the new apartment buildings." I'm, I resent this, okay, number one. You know, it's one thing to pay more taxes for services, but frankly, I resent having to pay more taxes for luxury building developments. And I'm wondering, is this set in stone, or is this something that was thrown out by the, during the negotiations?
Ms. O'Leary, I'm not entirely sure where you're quoting from, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna take Mr. Bernstein out of context, but the Haberman negotiations, I can take a look at it and talk with you offline if you'd like, but as far as the negotiations, they're still ongoing. This council has not finalized nor voted on anything yet. We are still at the table with, you know, with the other side.
Okay, so are you at the table, or are...
Yes, myself.
Could you voice, maybe, that people are not gonna be happy about paying for infrastructure for this luxury building?
All of those, all of those things that you're mentioning have been echoed by probably every single council member here.
Okay.
And is in my brain every day.
I myself can count the friends and classmates I've lost on two hands, and I came here years ago urging the previous city council to adopt harm reduction measures that have been effective in places like Portugal, France, and recently, New York City. And I saw no action, sympathy, but no action. I was met with what I've seen is an eagerness to revert to counterintuitive prohibition tactics. I understand that the stigma of cannabis as a gateway drug is worrisome to many of you, and I'm here to assure you that stigma is all it is. Seventy percent of drug overdoses in the United States involve an opioid, and eighty percent of heroin users begin by being prescribed opiates from a doctor. So clearly, prescription opiates are the real gateway. Meanwhile, there's never been a single recorded case of an overdose death from cannabis in any country, and that's according to the NIDA, whom AWA repeatedly cites on their website. The well-meaning people at Long Beach Aware, I meant to say Aware before, state that cannabis use can cause depression and anxiety in teens. However, cannabis is commonly prescribed for anxiety, and according to recent studies from the University of New Mexico, is useful in treating depression. In fact, anxiety is one of the most commonly cited reasons that users list for citing cannabis. So by Aware's logic, you might as well say that cannabis causes lower back pain, or glaucoma, or post-traumatic stress disorder. No, it's meant to treat those things. So when, when Ms. Vining talks about a message that she wants to send her kids, the message I'm hearing is that facts don't matter, and that people's health doesn't matter, okay? It's all about stigma. Okay? I don't know if any of you have ever been to a dispensary, but when you go to a dispensary, they have knowledge of their product, you can pick what you're getting. You can ask them for a milder strain, you can ask them for something that's good for your anxiety, and you'll be able to make an informed decision about that. Now, instead of buying from a dealer who probably only has one or two strains and doesn't know anything about their product. Dispensaries also provide a central location where harm reduction measures can be concentrated on. Phone numbers for addiction, sorry, you can concentrate those, those harm reduction measures at a, at a dispensary. You can have numbers on the wall for addiction help, for social workers, for any other problem you might have. Not to mention that cannabis is commonly prescribed for things that are, that opioids are over-prescribed for, such as pain. I also understand Aware's concern that Long Beach has higher use rates for drugs and alcohol among teens than the rest of New York and Nassau County, and I'm not claiming to have a perfect solution to that problem. What I am saying, however, is that teaching abstinence does not work. There's a reason why overdose, overdose deaths in Portugal decreased from 369 in 1999 before decriminalization of all drugs to, I'm almost done, sorry, to only 30 in 2016. And that's because the Portuguese government stopped stigmatizing drugs and started actually helping people who were being hurt by them. We have an opportunity to create an environment that is both safer and respect the rights of people to decide what they put in their body with the information necessary to make those informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Janet Cohen.
Janet Cohen, Long Beach. Can you guys hear me?
No.
Janet Cohen, Long Beach.
Better?
Go to Janet Cohen. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Since this is the first, I'm not very good at this, but since this is the first open meeting, I'd like to congratulate, and it's great to see Roy and Tina up here, and congratulate John for winning the election.
Thank you.
We want to congratulate you for coming up and speaking.
Oh, my God. I know.
Yay, Janet.
I can normally do this in my building, but for some reason, I'm like shaking.
We're friendly.
Can you still hear me?
Yes. Don't waste your time.
No, it's horrible back there, because you truly can't hear. Okay. Thanks to the entire council for all their hard work, commitment, and dedication. But there are times where there may be a difference amongst you guys, and everyone needs to respect everyone's opinion. Sometimes it's very obvious what we see out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
And the word of the day is?
I missed out on my part of the city manager's report, so, I know, we didn't do one, but happy Women's History Month, everybody.
Happy Mardi Gras.
Yes.